Dollars, we're gonna go over the we're gonna have the 2026 annual appropriation ordinance come up for its first reading today. Everything is compiled based upon our previous committee meetings. There's any questions, Mr. Rivers will take questions immediately afterwards. So you're sure.
All right, so the, like, Councilmember Ben Scherer said, it's a compilation of our previous finance committee meetings where we discuss the five-year capital concentrating on the 2026 portion of that, same thing with the debt and our 2026 operating budget. So, probably the best thing to look at would be the three-page Excel spreadsheet. Because that mentions in the description columns if there's a grant or, you know, a loan or it'll say that. So, on the first page, you know, we have the general fund, emergency reserve, unclaimed funds, which we don't get a lot of activity, but we have to place unclaimed funds in that fund for a period of five years and then they can be transferred to the general fund. Retirement reserve, which we use for payments when somebody retires, you know, their unused sick vacation comp time, et cetera.
Vacation bank?
Yeah, basically a vacation bank. Refund program, that's what we issue the refund refunds out of for the Massaronia Resort refund program, which is due July 15th every year.
Unless you have an extension to read them.
Unless you have an extension to read them. Technology advancements, which we use for all of our software maintenance and upgrades. Which is, I mean, it's great that we're able to have these segregated funds. All, all the one oh whatevers, the one oh one to the one oh six. The auditor groups those as a general fund. They allow us to segregate, but they still report the total as general fund. Emergency reserve at 1.3, I think, what was it when I started here?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand. So, that's great that we're able to have that. S C M N R, which is a fund required by the state special revenue fund, if you see it under the type column. Special revenue because we receive taxes from license tax, gasoline fuel tax. So it has to go into a street construction maintenance and repair fund. That's what the S C M N R stands for. And we also pay employees out of this, not every community does that.
Do you play employees' vehicles, leak trucks come out of that?
No, those come out of 280 for the most part. Same.
Materials for, for patching the road, or what else are the employees?
Vehicle maintenance costs come out of here, vehicle supplies. Those are the big expense items other than wages that come out of here. Salt usage for the roads. State highway, again, a special revenue fund. We get a little bit of money each year from the state. We use the 55,000 for salt, basically. Immersive license is another special revenue fund where the county gathers this money on our behalf and we are using it this year. We let it accumulate a certain number of years. What does it collect, about 4,000 a month?
It's about 5,500 a month.
5,500 a month? Reason is for ledge road from the bridge to
To North Bedford.
To North Bedford. So we'll, we'll just let it accumulate up again and use it for another road project in the future. Parks and Rec, we have a couple employees out of there. Family Ruck Center, more employees out of there and obviously a bigger. So basically, Family Ruck Center is the building. Parks and Rec is everything around it. Park Re- Rec, Parks and Rec Trust is for across the street. The Windmill Lakes. Golf Center. The
Can you explain what we talked about today?
Yeah, I was just
Why it's so big?
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to say I was discussing it with you earlier, but the balance in there is for future capital improvements, we are obligated to replace the capital assets over there, make capital improvements. So on the horizon at some point is gonna be replacing HVAC and the roof. We had transferred money into there because we had to do the parking lot in the roadway up to a certain point, heading out towards 82. Transferred, actually, the bid ended up coming in lower than we thought, so we just left the money in there knowing that we were going to at some point have to improve the roof and the HVAC. And the mayor and I just had a meeting with the two principals, if you will, of the building. They dropped off a nice check for percentage rent and we discussed HVAC unit and roof. So they are aware, I think they asked us, they wanted to double check that it was our responsibility.
City owns that whole property?
We own it. They're, they're leasing the property and the building from us.
When is this contract, lease contract?
Beginning of '15, I believe you guys approved it
Yeah, it's not too long ago.
Two or three years ago, so probably 10, 11, 12 years left on the contract.
Gotcha.
And they're, compared to the first ones in there, they're actually profitable, which is what we want.
They're well-known all over the region for being like the best fitting store.
Top two in the country.
Yep.
And then people come from a long distance to go there.
A bunch of little special revenue funds we could skip. One being, sorry, the water main, water maintenance and repair fund, which when I got here and think I don't know if you were on council when we converted it to the real estate.
I remember you doing it, I don't know if I was on council.
I know, Matt, you were not.
No. It was not my idea, it was his idea.
Yeah, it was not my idea.
I'll take it. It was my idea, thanks for doing it.
Thanks for the call, Jeff.
You bet.
But anyways, we used to, for those that don't know, used to mail out an invoice to every property owner for $20.80. And I think the first day I worked in May, Lisa Hammerick was crying at her desk and I said, what's the matter? She got all these pink, all these envelopes with the yellow sticker, you know.
Return to sender?
Return to sender. And I said, what are all those blue envelopes? Well, this is what we do, why do you do it that way? The old, that's what we always done.
But you'll hate that term? It's the way we've always done it, it's the most plain you can get.
So, obviously, and we'd have to send out, I found out, second notices to these people to try and collect $20.80. So now we put it on tax bill, makes it a lot easier for everybody. So on to the second page. Chief, Dr. Pogich, I did put some money in this year in the Ohio One Fund. 25,000 if we figure out a way to use it because we're gonna have about 6,000, 7,000 in there. So this, this is the settlement for the opioids. We've been accumulating the money and looking for ways to spend it, so I put some money in the appropriations.
Well, let's be clear, it's heavily regulated how we can use those slots.
Yeah, no, it's hard to find.
We're not looking for ways to just spend money, we're looking to understand what we can spend it on.
Looking for ways that meet the
Qualify.
Criteria, yeah. Safety service fund, that is, you can see that gets income tax in. That was the voted increase. We have three firefighters, one police officer and one service employee paid out of there. A lot of capital assets, obviously, you see that capital items, $781,000, $500. Transfer out for the aerial tower debt. General bond, all of our bond funds, 001, 302, 304. 301, you'll see the borrowing of 13,400,000 and that gets transferred out to municipal property fund down below. That's for the service center, which would represent about 75% of the cost estimate. So we're planning to pay 25% down. Nothing else jumps out. Oh, the slate roof for the manor house down below, we're looking to replace that in '26. We'll have $250,000 roughly encumbered or appropriated for that project. And the last page is basically the tips and some agency funds. Again, we went into further detail in the past two weeks on all of this.
The last tip you
Amalgamation of all those pages.
That had to go to the school board, did that come back okay or did it?
No, nobody
There's a time, there's a time period, so if they don't respond, it's, it's a yay.
They didn't respond and we're keeping them whole, so I'll do the same with the holiday end after first reading. Personally deliver, so I know they got it. And then a one-page summary that kind of is the footnotes version. I think easy to follow. That's it.
All right, so we will have first reading tonight?
Yeah. And then, you know, you could have more questions, we'll have second reading in November. You know, if anybody has questions, comes up on the agenda again. And then final reading and passage hopefully in December. Almost right on time.
You timed that perfectly.
Thank you, Josh.
You're welcome.
Do we need to wait till 7:15 because of the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Should have titled that immediately.
My watch is right?
No.
No?
It's almost 7:15. It's 7:13.
For those who that don't know, my daughter, Jacqueline, who I'd lost a little, had a baby girl along, kind of like.
If everyone's ready, we can start with ordinance 51. Who wants to speak to this, I forget?
So we've been talking a lot about this and there's been a lot going back and forth and you really have two choices at this point, either you can vote it down, get it out of there and we can revisit it at some point or we could table it, I mean, it's kind of up to you guys, I don't like leaving things sitting. So I think my, my, my opinion to me right now is you just vote this down. I can't tell you how to vote, but there's just too much going on with that, there's a lot more that needs to be done. It's just gonna sit there forever, I don't know that we're anywhere near being ready to even deal with that. So, I think my advice would be, or my opinion would be, to just put it up for a vote and
So I, I just double-checked, so we would still need to get the recommendation from planning?
I was gonna ask about that.
Oh, before we could even
Vote on it, right?
Are we allowed to table it without going to planning?
That you could do, yeah.
Table it, but it's gonna sit there for a long time.
It's gonna sit there.
And again, we're still gonna go to planning, it's still gonna be conversations, it's just the way it's written, there's just way too much, in my opinion, that needs to happen there. I, I don't like letting things sit there, but it's up to you guys, you guys choose whatever you want to do.
Anybody object to?
Oh, we have to go to planning before we can do third reading anyway?
No.
You, so you could, I guess, hold it at third reading, you just can't vote on it?
Really can't do anything with it tonight?
But if it's gonna take as long as the mayor suggests, it's probably a good idea just to get rid of it in any real shape or form, you can't just not worry about it until it comes up again.
So you wouldn't put it for a vote until you have planning commissions?
Okay.
By, I mean by code rule, it says you can't it's there until they
Or do you want to just not read it, let them come back and
Or we could just do that.
And then we could potentially vote on it?
Just skip it, just skip it for now, I'm gonna use
Are there any downsides to like voting something down? Can you bring
We're in the next meeting.
If you say legally, can't do that.
Yeah.
Just so you know, if you decide to bring it up on the November 17 meeting and, you know, discuss it again.
Planning?
Yep.
I'm gonna skip 55 and 64, just to make sure we get through the rest. So, let's go to 73. So we're not talking about
You're, you're holding it anyway, actually.
Yeah, I just, I know we got some feedback from the planner and I thought we could talk about it at least, I'm gonna definitely, I don't, I don't have any interest in moving forward. But I figured, like, we could, we should probably go through the rest of the agenda before we hear what planning said. So 73.
So this is a rollover, one-year rollover of our current 2.705 million ban that we borrowed last year for Highland Valley intersection. Portion of ledge road and the design engineering for State Route 88 and Highland intersection. So we're planning to pay 120,000 down in principal and keep it in short-term notes as the market, as the interest rates in the market continue hopefully to drop before we lock it in to a bond. That's it.
Why don't we look at a new one, two, three, and then?
You don't have to, but you can.
So it's not a timing issue with the market?
No, not at all. We're gonna go to market in January, early January. But I always like to at least give council three readings that they want them. So that's why I placed
I appreciate that, I, I misunderstood, I thought you were trying to do something before the rates change.
No, we're hoping they continue to go down.
He's hoping they go down again.
Yeah, sorry. Even further, you know.
Then we'll just do first read.
Okay.
74.
The holiday end tip, trying to get that, leave it on first reading so I can send notices to the schools. But, yeah. See it, definitely in the Twitter's and all kinds of stuff.
75. What are we doing with 74?
First read, so I could notify the schools.
75?
Yeah, 75.
75 is for us to apply to ANAS for grant dollars to resurface North Bedford Road between State Route 82 and ledge road and also to apply for additional grant dollars for the destruction of the Rowgate Highland Intersection project. Applications are due November 6th, so I would ask for a 1, 2, 3.
You read my mind. Anyone have any questions? All right, 76, I think we know for free. Anyone have any questions, I imagine not, because it just came out of the committee here. So going back to 55 and 64, Mark, do you wanna help me with that message that you sent? I think I understand it, but the one from
So the, the planning commission, I think you guys all received a copy of the planning commission's recommendation, which was pretty it was kind of a one-sentence recommendation. So I had contacted the planning chair just to see if he could provide some clarification and paraphrasing, I don't think the commission really felt passionately one way or the other about the only issue that was really discussed, which was should the length of time be extended into and through October, I think?
I believe that's the suggestion.
The thought process, I think, came from the city planner that maybe people are traveling more at that time and it should be extended, but other than that, they didn't really have any comments and recommended approval.
Okay, I, there was a part of that email that said something about inverting the times that kind of threw me off and I wanted to follow up with because the way I interpreted it, it sounded like the message was to, to permit it during the winter months and deny it during the summer months, which doesn't make sense. So I was hoping to follow up with the planner.
Gotcha.
But, and I was gonna just hold 55 and 64 until we can do that. I think that's it, unless there are any other motions we need to talk about. Or if anybody else has anything else they wanna bring up? All right. Could be back eight minutes?
What are we doing?
I know.
Good evening and welcome to the October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five Macedonia City Council meeting. It is seven thirty PM. Mr. Hoover, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Brand.
Here.
Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Now I ask Chaplain O'Brien to lead us in the invocation.
As we gather here this evening, let us reflect on the immense responsibility and privilege that comes with serving our community. We invoke the spirit of unity, wisdom, and compassion as we deliberate and make decisions that will shape the future of our city. May our actions be guided by a commitment to justice, fairness, and the well-being of our residents. Let us remember that we are the stewards of the public trust entrusted with the duty to create a city that is inclusive, prosperous, and safe for all. As we convene, let us seek inspiration from the diverse voices and perspectives that make up our city, knowing that it is through collaboration and understanding that we can achieve greatness. In this moment of reflection, let us also express our gratitude for the strength and resilience of our community. We acknowledge the challenges we face and the sacrifices made by countless individuals who strive to make our city a better place. As we come together today, let us be mindful of those who are less fortunate and in need of our support. May our decisions and actions reflect a commitment to uplifting those who are marginalized or facing adversity. Let us work together with humility, recognizing that the true measure of our success is not in our titles or achievements, but in the positive impact we have on the lives of our fellow citizens. As we commence this council meeting, may we be guided by the spirit of cooperation and goodwill, working tirelessly to build a brighter future for all who call this city home. Amen. And now our mayor will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Through the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Chaplain O'Brien.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next up on the agenda is approval of minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, October ninth, two thousand twenty-five regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is public comments. We have one signed up today. We ask that you come to the podium, give your name, address, and our limit is five minutes for that. And we have one signed up today, and that is Judge Curtin. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Judge Cynthia Curtin. I'm your fairly new judge at the Stowe Municipal Court. I've been going to all of the council meetings in the jurisdiction to introduce myself, so you can put a face to the name. I tried to get here in August, but you had canceled your meeting, and then I tried to come two weeks ago and I had roadside mechanical problems. So third time is a charm. It was important for me to be here, so I'm glad that it worked out tonight. Prior to being on the bench, well, first of all, I should say I was appointed by Governor DeWine right after Memorial Day. And prior to joining the court, I had thirty-five years of litigation experience. I did jury trials, appellate argument, motion practice, mediation, arbitration. I handled arbitration hearings, which is very similar to what I do now. I listen to both sides and then make a decision. I've handled a variety of different matters, mostly civil matters and some minor criminal matters as well. I've represented small businesses, large corporations, national retailers, insurance companies, and individuals. I've managed and owned my own certified woman law firm, and I have managed litigation in various state and federal courts around the country, assisting national counsel for two major retailers. So I have a broad depth of legal experience to carry out the duties of judge. So rest assured, the court is running smoothly. I'm carrying on the duties just fine. I'm working with your prosecutor and your defense counsel to keep the court's docket moving. I handle arraignments for minor misdemeanor crimes as well as felony arraignments. I also visit classrooms to educate our young people about the consequences of committing a crime, hopefully that if they hear some of these things that they'll think twice before making the wrong decision. So we are busy at the court, but I just wanted to stop by to introduce myself, so you can put a face to the name. I should say that my term ends at the end of the year, so I'm running this November for a new term. Be certain, vote Curtin. But anyway, I just wanted you to be able to put a face to the name, and I appreciate your time and consideration, and glad I finally made it the third time here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is correspondence from the clerk.
Yes, I have one message that was conveyed to the service department. A resident called to say how happy she is with the dedication and hard work of our service department. Her streetlight was out and now taken care of, and she sees how hardworking everyone is. She stated that she is proud to be a citizen of Macedonia, and that is it.
Thank you. We'll move right into pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number seventy-three.
I move to offer ordinance number seventy-three, two thousand twenty-five, for its first reading by title only.
Emergency ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds in a principal amount not to exceed two million six hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of retiring outstanding bond anticipation notes issued in two thousand twenty-five for various purposes.
Director Vares, can you give a little synopsis of what that's about?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is a bond anticipation note that was first garnered last year at this time for two million seven hundred five thousand. We're looking to roll it over, pay down a hundred twenty thousand dollars in principal, and bond it out sometime in the future when, you know, long-term interest rates are favorable.
Thank you. Ordinance number seventy-four.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number seventy-four, two thousand twenty-five, for its first reading only by title only.
Emergency ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property to be of public purpose, describing the public improvements to make which directly benefits such parcels, requiring the owner of the improvements on such parcels to make service payments and low taxes, establishing a holiday and municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, sections five zero nine dot four zero, five zero nine dot four two, and five zero nine dot four three.
Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just continuing our tax and refinancing program that we have in place. This is for the Holiday Inn that's on Girl Scout Way, and we look to capture tax dollars for public infrastructure improvements in that area.
Thank you. Resolution seventy-five.
Mayor, I move to offer resolution number seventy-five, two thousand twenty-five, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for federal service transportation block grant, STBG program, and/or resurfacing funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMATS, for certain capital infrastructure improvements.
Director Gelati.
Yeah, this resolution allows us to apply for grant dollars to resurface North Bedford Road between State Route eighty-two and Ledge Road, and also to apply to AMATS for additional grant dollars for the State Route eight Highland Intersection improvements.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move that we adopt resolution number seventy-five, two thousand twenty-five, and post same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution seventy-five carries. Ordinance number seventy-six.
Yes, Mayor, I offer ordinance number seventy-six for its first reading by title only.
Ordinance providing for the two thousand twenty-six annual appropriations for the city of Macedonia, Ohio.
This one's somewhat self-explanatory. We're working on our budget for two thousand twenty-six. We've had multiple meetings leading up to today to kind of get council aware of where we're trying to head with things. Anything I'm missing, Chair or Director of Finance?
No, sir.
Any further discussion from anyone else? We will always do that with three reads, so this is the first of three reads, and we hope to pass that in December so we can go into the new year with a proper budget in place. Any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I'll move into the mayor's report. You may notice again today that we're all, well, most of us are wearing pink. I think almost everyone. Breast cancer awareness month. We're very proud to be a partner in that and show our appreciation for those that are fighting that horrible disease. I unfortunately lost a family member that was very close to me to that, so it's kind of special to me. We have an employee that works in this building that actually beat breast cancer. We're very proud of that, and we're proud to have her, and it's an amazing fight that she won, and I'm very appreciative that she was able to beat that. But we also have some things out there. Our H&R Department's done an amazing job of, you know, getting some things together. All the dollars that come from that are getting donated to the Susan Coman Foundation, which is a breast cancer research firm, I will say. So it's all good stuff, and I'm very proud to be a part of that. So normally we dress in suits and ties, but today we're a little dressed down, but we're showing a little bit of love. So thank you for everyone that participated in that. Halloween will be on October thirty-first from six to eight. Let me repeat that one more time. Halloween will be on October thirty-first from six to eight.
What if it rains?
If it rains, we still trick or treat.
Halloween's all day.
Trick or treat is from six to eight. Sorry, I got a frog in the throat today. Another thing I want to recognize is First Responders' Day is coming up on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth. We always want to show that love for our first responders. I think we have some of the best around. I don't think I know. If you have to call nine-one-one, God forbid, I can assure you that you're gonna get the best, and they're coming to you. And I can't tell you how many times that I have people thank me, which they shouldn't be thanking me, but for what we've done to save their lives. We had our safety day here with a bunch of people getting sworn in through the police departments, dispatchers, firefighters, and there was a lady that approached Chief Ripley here, and we literally saved this woman's life. Like, she would have not been here had it not been for our quick response to get to her and save her life. The police were there, I think, even before our fire department got there, so this is not just a fire department. I mean, the dispatchers are a piece of this. The police get there, the firefighters get there. We have a heck of a team here, and you gotta know that if you live here and you have a problem, God forbid, we're gonna get to you fast. And I'm very, very proud to be a part of that team. So thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for all you do with that. Next up on my list is issue thirty-eight's coming up here. There's a lot of talks right now with income tax, property tax, and all the things related to it. Issue thirty-eight is a renewal for the city of Macedonia. This has been in place since the nineteen-sixties. We've passed it every time. I believe it's every five years. It's critical for safety forces that we fund with those dollars. So when you go to the ballot and you hear all the things out there in society and social media where they're talking about, oh, vote everything down, this is critical. And what I just talked about will affect that greatly, because those dollars we use directly for safety forces. So this is a renewal. It will not cost you another penny. We're not increasing it, and I'm asking for people to give that consideration, because this is important for what we do every day in keeping you safe. So issue thirty-eight, please vote, and I would only urge you to give that strong consideration to keep that in place, because we desperately need to have that. Last but not least, don't drive distracted. Put the phones down, drive the car. I can't tell you, I think this week, we've had several pretty serious accidents. I can only surmise that they may have been on their phones. You guys all drive your cars every day. You see what's going on in the roads. It's scary. It is really scary to me when I'm driving down Route eighty-two or Route eight and someone's serving into my lane and they're doing this. I hate it. It drives me bonkers, and I don't use the word hate very often, but that's one thing that really sticks in my craw. Put the phones down. It's not, that text message or whatever you're looking at is not worth affecting your life or anyone else's. So please, I beg you, put the phone down, concentrate on the road. Committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission had our October meeting last week. It was a great meeting. Now the Director Echendorf has been in place a little bit longer. Things are really moving fast at the Parks and Rec Department. It was great to have everyone in attendance. We got updated on what is going on in the department and the events that they've already done. Fall Fest, the car cruise-in, the annual shutdown, not an event, but it's something that they've done, hiring. We talked about the new paved trail that is gonna be opening soon. Everyone had a chance to look at it on their way into the meeting, and everyone is very, very proud of that project, and we'll be having, I'm sure Mr. Echendorf will talk about it, but we'll be having an opening for that next week. We had a discussion about bicycle rules for that trail, made some decisions. E-bikes and bicycles, there was always the intent to allow bicycles on that trail. In fact, you know, one of our members has been pushing for the trail to even happen, you know, insisted, you know, she wanted to ride her bicycle. We find that bicycle riding is great. It's something that people are able to share the trails on the tow path and whatnot. So we just had a discussion about e-bikes on that, and we will be imposing a speed limit for e-bikes and scooters on the path. So that was a really great discussion with a lot of great input. We also talked about dog leashes in the park and on the trail, and even though that we recently passed an ordinance here that allows for twenty-foot leashes within the neighborhoods, there's always been an eight-foot leash requirement in the parks, even before there was one for within the city. And talking it over with Director Echendorf, we realized that, you know, there's gonna be a lot more traffic in the parks on the trails than there is on your residential streets. So for now, we're gonna keep the leash length at eight foot, so make sure when you're out there on the new trail, starting next week, you have your dogs on a leash, which has always been the rules in the park. Our next meeting won't be till January twenty-first. Typically, we do take off in December, November. We just don't have the time to do it. People are gonna be missing it. So the third Wednesday in January, January twenty-first, we'll have a meeting at six o'clock upstairs at the rec center, and that's all.
Ms. Brand, I have a question. You talked about the e-bikes and scooters and stuff. Has there been any consideration along with the police department of the speed limit and how that would be enforced?
It's like any other bike issues. People are gonna have to report it. People will have to... We didn't want to, you know, we didn't want to not encourage people to have bicycles on there, so we can't...
Bicycles, yes, but e-bikes and electronic scooters and stuff, I will come up to the next meeting if I can and give my opinion on that at that time.
There's a lot of seniors that use e-bikes and are looking for a place to ride them. E-bikes are, use it for assistance, not for speed, so it makes it easier to ride a bicycle. So one of our members is a doctor, and she has senior parents in town, and she pointed out that it's a great way for people to find new places to ride their bicycles. So being on an e-bike doesn't mean you have to go twenty miles an hour. Being on an e-bike can just mean assistance with pedaling. So obviously, we're not gonna have police stationed there.
Exactly.
But the same way, you know, the same way that we have an ordinance that says you have an eight-foot leash law there, it's not a problem until it's a problem. So we're not gonna not have, we're not gonna disallow them, and we're not gonna not put a speed limit on them. So that is, that's what we decided. And I don't even know, is it an issue for the police firm? Because we don't, we're not gonna have an ordinance, it'll be a rules...
Right. I actually made a note, Ms. Brand, and I'd be glad to attend the next meeting or be part of any discussion to...
Okay. Mr. Echendorf, you did talk about e-bikes on the path with...
With Lieutenant Castello. He made a recommendation as a part of that discussion.
Okay. Well, we can continue the discussion.
Yeah.
Did you have something to add?
I just made a note. I'll take whatever quote says about, I mean, it depends on how you want to implement it, what solutions you want to have for some of your bike lanes, but that'd be part of that discussion.
Any other committee reports?
Yes, Finance Committee will meet again fifteen minutes prior to the work session on Thursday, November thirteen.
Thank you. Department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a new employee, and she volunteered to come tonight. This is Jenna Weigle. She is our new administrative assistant in addition to our already administrative assistant, Laura. So just filling that position that was already in the budget. So we're happy to have her. There's basically two major projects we're doing right now, and it takes, both take a lot of people. One is the Christmas lights, which consumes a lot of manpower and energy, and leaf removal. We are not in the worst of the leaf removal yet, but we are definitely into it, and the new machines and trucks are working great. We're thankful to have it. It's proven to be more efficient, and we're excited about that. So, you know, we've already seen a difference. Ray called me earlier this week. He said, hey, can I pull one of these leaf machines? You know, we're doing really well out here, you know? So he's like, he's seeing that, like, we can take some guys and, you know, go help out, get some other random things done. know, go help out, get some other random things done that, that just are hanging out there, or send a couple guys to go help with the Christmas lights and stuff like that. So we're just already seeing the efficiency in that. So that's all. Thank you.
I want to thank you for what you did with that, because leaves are always a big thing. Like, snow and ice removal is always, we get the most complaints about, well, you haven't plowed yet, or the leaves are killing my grass. And I can say that the process that Director Wilson has implemented is going to improve that, I'd say, two or threefold. I mean, what you have in place now is the best we've ever had. It's going to get it quickly. It's going to free up resources. That department's very, very busy, and I appreciate all you do with that. So thank you for all your hard work. Director Gelati.
Yes, thank you. So we already talked about the trail at Longwood Park. You can probably talk about the ribbon cutting, everything. Only other item to report on, the storm sewer replacement in the tree lawn in front of Aldi will be starting soon. There will be periodic closures of just the curb lane in front of Aldi. Otherwise, we don't expect too many issues there. End of report.
Thank you. Director Ekinor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to acknowledge and thank everybody who came and helped us partake in the haunted manor this past weekend. The grounds looked great. The inside of the house looked great. It was a great event. We're looking forward to being able to build on that in the years moving forward. As many have mentioned, we've got our paved trail ribbon cutting ceremony next Wednesday, October 29th, at 5:30 PM. It's going to be back by the pond area. So I encourage the community to come out and help us open up that trail officially and take an inaugural lap around, so we can enjoy all the sights of the park that we're now able to see with that trail complete. And finally, the rec center is 25 this year. It opened up in the year 2000, so we are going to have a week-long celebration November 10th through 14th, with various activities and memories being shared throughout that week at the rec center. So look for more information coming out about that. End of report.
Thank you. Director Verris.
Thank you, Mayor. Our new agenda tonight is ordinance number 76, 2025, which is the 2026 annual appropriation. I just want to thank council and the administration for all the hard work in helping me get this on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. The tech community said a formal goodbye to Windows 10 last week. If you're a home user, I would recommend that you either go through the process of signing up for the additional year of support that Microsoft has in place. It's a little bit of a tedious process, but I'd either recommend doing that or replacing your machine or looking for an alternative operating system such as Chrome OS to run on the machine. I would just recommend that don't continue to use these machines if you're not getting security updates, because you're going to be leaving yourself vulnerable. I wouldn't do banking and things like that on an insecure Windows machine. Unfortunately, they're the vast majority of the machines available on the planet, and so they're the most targeted machines. So make sure you guys keep yourself safe online, you keep yourself safe in real life, and we want to be just as safe online. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starters, the sidewalk program is continuing. There'll be some meetings into the future on how we're going to proceed with that, but Nino and I thought it was important that we'd mention that we recommended that the contractor not take and remove any slabs this week between now and the trick-or-treaters. So concentrate on getting those that are open now poured, so that, to help the public and the kids running around, and no one falls in any open holes. So we definitely wanted to mention that. The new subdivision going in, I talked to their inspector, and by next week, all the streets will be poured, and that will give access to the electrical and gas companies to run their utilities. And so they're on schedule to start digging on probably a model home after the first of the year. And of course, you have other projects like the Holiday Inn and Divinity Landing, all those projects. The public's going to start seeing those getting framed up now. I know one has started already on Valley View. And also, we've been continuing our training on our new program in the building department. This will be very effective for the public. They'll be able to access online, you know, permits, mittles, reviews, and such. And also, it'll make the office a little bit more efficient, being that it'll be updated and be able to do a lot of things and store stuff on the computer. End of report.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. HR continues to prepare for our benefit open enrollment. It's coming up in late November to early December, and we're prepping for year-end reporting. End of report.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. Spoke to Clarence again up at the North Pole, where, Dan, he said it was snowing already. I just want to be clear with that. Said it looked like it was heading to northeast Ohio. Santa will be here in Macedonia December 8th, 9th, and 10th, and in Northfield Center on the 11th. There'll be more information coming out in all of our social media avenues with dates and times and locations. Other than that, as Ms. Brandt likes to remind me, because she needs to, November 2nd is time change. Change your smoke detector batteries. Even if they're hardwired, they have battery backup. If they are not hardwired, they are good for 10 years. So you may not have to change them, but please check them. End of report.
Thank you. Chief Yakapovich.
Thank you, Mayor. The Civil Service Commission met last Thursday and certified the civil service list for dispatch applicants. We have eight potential applicants on that list. We started interviews this week. End of report.
Thank you. Director Gaddati.
Your report, Mayor.
Any unfinished business? Any new business?
I just want to take a moment to congratulate the Nordonia Girls volleyball team for coming in second in suburban league this year and having a great season. Also, congratulate us across country on the end of a great season. And the band has been, we don't really mention the marching band too often here, because they've always been excellent since I've been in the band in the 90s and continuing on, but they have been getting excellence at their shows, and will be going on to state soon, so we wish them luck.
Thank you. Are we motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.